All right, I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. You want to call the roll?
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Niss. Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wobak.
Here.
Seven present.
So our first item of business is we have a closed session, conference with City Attorney, existing litigation, Sleazak versus the City of Palo Alto. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's unanimous, but... Yeah, and that passes on a seven to two vote with Niss and Phil Seth absent. And I'll note that I can actually read these for the first time.
Niss and Tanaka.
Oh, Tanaka, that's it, that's right. Yeah, still a long names. All right. We're now going to proceed into a study session, City Managers 2016 Annual Year in Review.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, new council. It's really nice to see you all. One of the, one of the nice things about doing the...
Jim, before we go, I actually forgot, I'm supposed to say, yes, we come out of closed session, that we have no reportable action.
Okay. Great, thanks. One of the nice things about doing a year in review, kind of look back, is that so often our orientation is always on what's ahead of us or what needs to be done. And it's, it's pretty easy to sort of lose perspective at times on how much has actually been accomplished or transpired during the year, or how wide-ranging the issues that the city deals with are. And, and in some ways, it's an opportunity for me to work with the staff to just sort of generate our own in-house report on what we've accomplished. And so I do this report each year, and it's abbreviated, so it's, it's meant to be more representative than exhaustive. I'm not trying to report on everything that really happened, but, and then I also thought that since we have a new council, it would be helpful maybe to provide some touch points or references on some of the kinds of issues that the council will be dealing with. So, I think about half of this actually is the year in review, and then half in just sort of my own thoughts about looking ahead to 2017. I did ask leadership team members, which are all of the appointed department heads and the, the other CAOs, in addition to the clerk, myself, the city attorney, and the city auditor, to potentially be available here to answer any of your questions if you want. Obviously, they were already surprised that we're a half hour ahead of schedule this year in a meeting, so they may not, they may not arrive...
I'm sorry.
Well, here come a few folks, but...
There they go.
So, I certainly would say, if you kind of let me go through the presentation, then if you had any questions or comments, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's just designed to serve your, your purposes. So, this is a little diagram that I'm fond of. Obviously, it looks a little bit weird up there on the, on the screens there. It looks perfectly fine on mine. It's an iceberg. And it's, it's a picture that we've used often trying to sort of describe what the work of the city is. And in many ways, we focus when the council adopts its priorities during the course, each year. You're going, you're scheduled to do that right now, to have the council priority setting retreat on the 28th of January. Beth, I don't know if we've established where we're going to be yet on that, but, okay. And you'll be setting the priorities for 2017. Of course, you've already pre-submitted your, your thoughts about what those would be. But in many ways, as voluminous as the council's priorities are as it relates to the work plan, in many respects, they represent sort of the tip of the iceberg, the things that are visible and above the waterline. And in addition to those, we have a bunch of cross-cutting initiatives at the staff level with the leadership team that we call ELT priorities. And again, both, those are above the waterline, so to speak, in the organization. And I think the thing that this diagram is designed to represent is that a good 80% of what we do as a city is really just the work of running the city, the day-to-day work of firefighters and police officers out on patrol and utility workers out, you know, making repairs, Parks and Rec folks teaching classes and those sorts of things, things that for the most part never rise to the level of the priority we're dealing with unless there's a very specific issue with it. So this idea of me just sort of saying, hey, what's in a year? Well, there's the council priorities, there are the ELT priorities, there's all the stuff of running the city, and there's this thing this year I put over here called incoming, which as you know, there are things that come in all year, usually from our community, that in many ways put requirements on the city to respond. And then across the bottom, I just, I listed this finances, staff, council, and community in many ways, thinking about, okay, in response to the demands of the city, what are the resources that we have? So on the one hand, there's the financial resources or capacity that we have as a city, the budget that we have. Secondly, it's the staff we have, the, a little over 1,000 full-time employees, maybe 1,500, 1,600 when we had part-time employees, the council itself. And the council has, in many ways, obviously, a fairly constrained capacity. There's nine of you, and there's 24 hours in a day and seven days in a week, times 365 days a year. That's the maximum capacity in a sense the council has. And some of this is designed for us to help us think when you go into your retreat about, how do we use all of these resources most efficiently? And then there's the resources of our community, both in, in requests or demands that they put especially to the council, but then also the, the abilities and the gifts they bring as volunteers to the city. All of that is what helps make up the good life of the city. So each year with the council, you know, we provide a work plan report in response to the council priorities. Last year, 2016, it ended, the council's priorities were the built environment, colon, housing, parking, livability, mobility, with a particular emphasis on mobility. Secondly, infrastructure. Third, healthy city, healthy community. And four, completion of the comprehensive plan with increased focus from the council. So when we did the retreat with the council last year in January or early February, we brought to the council, based on our estimate of what these issues would be, or soon thereafter, 69 different projects related to just the four council priorities. And by the, by mid-year, when we were reporting to the council, that had grown to 88 projects on just that list. And just to give you an example, I mean, if we were just to look in planning, some of those projects would be things like the SEQA transportation analysis, the Midtown Connector project, the annual land use code update, the next RPP implementation, retail preservation ordinance for Cal Avenue follow-up, a paid parking study, review office and R&amp;D use categories in zoning, vacation rentals ordinance, parking guidance system, shuttle expansion, quarry road, bicycle road improvements, all of those sorts of things. And they're probably, in the area of planning, obviously, given the fact that you have the built environment as the council had last year, we probably have, probably close to half of the projects in that almost 88 area, just in the realm of the planning department. And one of the things I have shared with the, the prior council is that when it comes down to the staff doing the work of the council in these priority areas, this sort of not, not just the business of running the city, we've added up over time, and we probably have about 80-some people in the entire organization who can work on all of those high-level issues. So it's not like we've got 1,000 or 1,500 people who are going to respond to the work plan that the council has, that I have, that the CAOs and the leadership team have, and even respond to lots of the complicated problems from the community. It's really a pretty small number of about 80-some people. And then the ELT itself has a lot of responsibilities, and our role as far as sort of making sure the city does perform well. And, I mean, those are things like reorganizing the office of management budget, pursuing fire accreditation, enhancing our regional dispatch, developing the library e-branch, focusing on utilities, infrastructure replacement and improvement, negotiating, renegotiating the Stanford Fire Contract, electrification work plan, et cetera, et cetera. We have over 100 projects from last year that were on the ELT work plan also. So I was going to just take a minute to kind of just touch on these, the resources that we have to respond to the demands of our community, the needs of, of our city. So in the realm of finances, I mean, just some interesting facts I put together this weekend for you, that since fiscal year 2010, our property tax revenue has increased 50%. Our sales taxes increased 69%, so that's over that seven or eight-year period. We're getting almost 70% more a year than we got in 2010. Our TOT, our, our, basically, our hotel-related tax is up 246%. Now, that's partly due to the fact that there was an increase that the council put on and has dedicated that to specific infrastructure projects. It's also due to the fact that we've had a number of hotels that have been built that provide this revenue. And I would say in many ways, that's been a crucial revenue for the city. We now bring in maybe about $23 million a year in TOT taxes, and that was significantly less. We'd have a lot more challenges, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself here. I just did want to let you all know that you're fortunate that we actually have a, a really competent financial staff. The city has 19 years of receipt of the Government Finance Officers Award for Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting, going back 19 years. We also have a similar award representing the, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. It's the highest award that can be applied to a, a local government and meeting, meets, demonstrates we meet the highest standards of, and principles of governmental budgeting. Of course, as many of you know that we are a AAA bond-rated city. And when we look at some of the things like the TOT revenues we're getting, I would just say, these are only estimates that we can try to put, put out, but what we're able to be collecting from Airbnb and Expedia online is about anywhere between 1.3 and 1.5 million dollars a year now. So that's something that we've just recently been started, we've started doing. So we've had a good revenue stream, but there's also been good discipline over the years on the expenditure side. Last year, we ended it with a $7.7 million surplus or overage of, of revenues over the expenditures that we have. So our budget stabilization reserve, which is our key reserve for the city's general fund, stands at $42 million. That's a 21.5% level of our general fund budget, operating budget. And the council's policy sets a target of 18.5%. So we're $5.9 million above that particular target. And just since 2012, we've transferred $36 million to the infrastructure reserve, above and beyond what our, our typical plan is for infrastructure funding. Okay, secondly, our staff as our key resources. There's a, a bunch of things on these charts, probably too hard for you to see them up there, might be better on the screen here. The, the two bar charts on the left-hand side attempt to show you the 10-year trend in full-time positions in the city. And we did a little bit of a chart, wouldn't hold it to be an exact line, on the population growth going through that, over that time. And you can see that even in 2017, we have about 20 fewer employees than we had 10 years ago in 2007. And in the general fund, we have over 40-some positions less in the general fund than we had in, in this case, in 2006. And obviously, our population has increased during that time. Right now, we have 99 vacant positions in the city. That's 9.4% of our workforce. So again, when we're thinking about, you know, sort of what we have planned and what we want to be responding to and delivering on. And this list here just tries to identify some of the recruitment highlights from 2016 of positions that we had to fill, and then some key vacancies that we already have looking ahead to 2017. And it's just indicative, a little bit of, of, of the level of turnover that we have, but also it's sort of the loss of experience and institutional knowledge that we often experience every year. You can see positions like utilities general manager, the budget director, the chief people officer, the human resources director, the assistant director in libraries, et cetera, et cetera. And even right now, key vacancies we have are the police chief, and now the assistant police chief. So these are for this year that we're in that we have to deal with. One assistant city attorney, and the assistant director of administrative services, that's Joe Saccio's position, two deputy city managers, two assistants to the city manager, transportation manager, advanced planning manager in planning, and some vacancies in public safety. Those don't represent all of the vacancies that we have, but they're, they are key. That being said, even though we have a lot of employees who are potentially eligible for retirement, our average age in our workforce is 42 years old. That's, there's been no major change in that over the past five years. The ethnic makeup or the racial makeup of our organization is 57% white, 43% non-white. That's an increase of 6% in the non-white population over a five-year period. And just as a note, Palo Alto population is 61% white and 39% non-white. And then additionally, our community, this is just designed to represent the fact, if on the corner, right corner here, you can see the request mapping on the GIS for various Palo Alto 311 requests, which essentially are problems that are coming in from our community, saying, hey, city, what about this pothole or this graffiti here or there? So we've got a increasingly robust feedback loop from our community. We have, as you know, so many, you know, commissioners, volunteers, friend group, friends' groups, neighborhood associations, all of whom are actively involved in the life of the city and enhancing our life. And then we have, you know, kind of key initiatives from the community itself. At the moment, right now, the Cool Block program is just identified here with the first pilot test of the Cool Block engagement program. And just some fun and interesting things for you just to think about in the course of year. The Art Center itself has 800 active volunteers and interns, and gets about a value of almost a quarter of a million dollars in volunteer aid. Our parks and open space volunteer hours are over 14,000 hours last year, just in our open space area, the volunteer of, the value of volunteer time is equivalent to seven full-time positions and over almost $400,000. So staff, finances, and the community with the council clearly as the interface between the staff and the community particularly. Okay, so looking back at 16, 2016, before we even really look at really the focus for the council's work plan, just examples of pop-ups that come up during the course of the year. So we have some, we have two single-story overlay zones, Greer Park and Los Orbolas, is that how I said, Orbolas, that we, that the council dealt with last year. You'd indicated sort of as a policy that we would take these up, but in many ways, this was not an issue that was on the city's work plan. Edgewood Plaza has, the departure of Fresh Market has continued to be a nagging problem for the community, for your staff, and for you, believe it or not, that has sucked up a fair amount of time. Airplane noise. Here we have a bunch of citizens in the overflow space watching the meeting, one of the many meetings related to airplane noise. Can't tell you how many hundreds and hundreds of hours it took just on the staff side, let alone community volunteers. And then, of course, we always will have some projects that are way out of the ordinary. Last year, we had the Super Bowl, which, believe it or not, took all kinds of, at least frenetic whirring and planning on the front side. If you can't see this, this was one of my favorite tweets from our police department last year during this. This was before the New England Patriots had gotten here to play at the game. And of course, our guy here is saying, going to a Super Bowl party this weekend? Please use a non-drinking driver and be sure to properly inflate your tires. Just to let you know that our police department has a good sense of humor. Oh, let me go back for a second. Then there are other pop-up issues. You could think of many that really kind of weren't on the, dewatering is something that really escalated as a community concern that took a lot of time. The Syna Arts departure, the minimum wage issue, even though it wasn't a lot, the welcoming community concern and the council resolution, we may have many more things like that that come forward in the future years, in the coming year. Other notable deliverables, we started off the year with the Sustainable, Sustainability Climate Action Plan Summit, and where the council ultimately enhanced our, our climate action plan goal with a target of an 80% reduction by 2030. The CAC continued their work on the comprehensive plan. The council itself reviewed three sections of the plan in 2016. In other areas in there, the council adopted Professorville Design Guidelines, update for architectural review findings. We updated the planning department user fees to align with the city's cost recovery policy. We updated impact fee calculations. The council, got council approval for concept plans for four additional bike boulevards. You can see the bike pedestrian plan advancing. We received grants totaling $6 million for pedestrian and streetscape improvements on El Camino Real. And actually, what I think is just an amazing accomplishment really by all, so we worked out a, an agreement that was acceptable to both CPI, the neighbors, and the city relating to the ultimate departure of, of that use from the community. Other notable issues that are TDM and Transportation Management Agency, efforts inched forward. It's a challenging, challenging issues for us. We did put a lot of effort into parking and those sorts of things. We commenced phase two of the downtown RPP program. We also completed traffic signal upgrade citywide and updated signal timing on San Antonio, Middlefield, and Barcadaro Bryant and others. And we finished this successful first review cycle on the city's interim annual limit on the office and R&amp;D development in the fastest-changing areas of the city. You see the picture of the golf course under construction that, that began along with the San Francisco project construction, a project that has been in the works for well over 10 years underway. Additionally, in the realm of infrastructure-related issues, one of your priorities, just as relates to paving, we reached a score of 83 for our pavement condition index. And, and we expect to reach 84 by next year. If you recall, the conditions in the county measure B, any city with an 85 or a higher pavement condition index, it will be able to use those funds provided in that portion of the countywide bond measure for any transportation need that we see. We now have the best street condition of all cities in Santa Clara County. We completed the Blue Ribbon Committee process recommending new stormwater management fees. We did complete the first-year pilot study of requirements on the basement dewatering, began construction on the final two of seven capital projects from the 2005 storm drain fee election. That's the Lincoln Avenue Phase Three and the Matadaro Pump Station improvements. We completed Bowden Park improvements, completed the Baylands Boardwalk feasibility study and began design of the new boardwalk. We completed a traffic circles improvements project, completed community garden irrigations project, the, finished the installation of new civic center wayfinding and signage, completed new signage for the Art Center and Rinconada Library, completed installation of book drops and bicycle repair stations at Mitchell Park and Rinconada Libraries, and infrastructure plan projects. The Charleston-Racadero Corridor project received NEPA clearance, and we completed 35% design. And we've got, of course, also approval of the council on the design of the 101 pedestrian-bike bridge up there in the right-hand corner. And the council made a decision on the public safety building, and we are in design on Fire Station 3, which is on Barcadaro and Newell Road. And one of your last actions before the end of the year was approval on the design and environmental services contract for the downtown parking garage. So that's in the realm of infrastructure. And just some other notables. Whenever I wonder sometimes what I'm doing, city manager in the city, I go out to the Baylands and I go for a run, and as I run down Barcadaro, you know, I notice the fact that actually we have enhanced car dealerships that have moved in there over the years, which certainly has helped out with the city's revenue. I get down to the golf course and see that we're rebuilding the golf course. I look just beyond that, and we've got the county airport, what used to be the county airport, that the city has now taken over, is enhancing. You know, I mentioned the Creek project itself. We've got the regional water quality control plant, and we got council approval to put out the bid, the $25 million construction project to basically allow us to eliminate sludge incineration at that facility within two years, reducing our greenhouse gas efficiency dramatically. And I knew for certain, Councilmember Schmidt's attention to the, to the Baylands always, he was always asking me when a new section of the, of the landfill was going to be opened up. And these pictures just show you again, this, this year, the additional landscaping. And if, if you haven't been out there, get a chance to kind of go out and take a walk and run around there. It's fantastic. It's fantastic. And then lastly, in the area of, of water, we have, we're in the finalization period of, we finalized a precedent-setting agreement with the Water District for them to fund $2 million in studies for new water resources for Palo Alto, including more upgraded water, recycled water and potential groundwater recharge. We outperformed our drought reduction requirements from the state. And of course, we had a colleague's memo from the council at the end of the year really asking us to look at how we could begin to work with East Palo Alto to share some of our assured water supply, given the fact that they are way underserved in water. And then finally, again, if we go back to below the iceberg and just remember sort of the, the day-to-day life of running this city, all of these are just pictures of things that, for the most part, take place every day around the city by different staff people who are making sure that the lights are on, that we're providing friendly customer service at our revenue counter, even to dogs, and willing to stick their head in God knows what situation in order to make sure that the city is, is safe. And then, you know, every year, we just have a plethora of staff people, projects, initiatives the city has that receives recognition. We received the Best in Active and Safe Communities Award in the 2016 Healthy Cities Campaign in response to, I think in many ways, to the council's priority. Our Staff and Development Services from Acela received their 2016 Trend Setter Award. This picture here is of Kathy Durham, one of our former employees who is recognized for her groundbreaking Safe Routes to School work as the Bicycle Professional of the Year by the League of American Bicyclists, and also an additional award related to our bike program. We received an award from the California Energy Efficiency Industrial Council as an energy champion. Our urban forestry program received accreditation by the Society of Municipal Arborists. You can see Chief Nickel here in the picture, who was recognized by the California State Fire Marshal as a Certified Fire Chief. He is only one of 33 to obtain this certification in the whole state of California. And our own Chief Information Officer, Jonathan Reikenthal, was recognized as one of the top 20 most influential CIOs in the United States, public and private sector realms. And for the fourth year in a row, Palo Alto was named among the top five digital cities in our population category by the Center for Digital Government. And I don't think our auditor is here tonight, but Harriet, Harriet Richardson received the Association of Governmental Accountants Excellence in Government Leadership Award for a state and local government professional. And she also received the Knighton Award from the Association of Government Auditors for the Animal Services Audit. We won the EPAEAT Sustainable Purchasing Award from the Green Electronics Council. We received an award of outstanding achievement for local government innovation from the Alliance for Innovation. And the city's information security manager received an award for excellence in cybersecurity leadership from the California Cybersecurity Symposium. So, City of Palo Alto, 2017, the year in preview, not the year, in review, there you all are, up there. So 2017 looks like a good year to focus. One of the interesting things is that we've had for a couple of years, for example, completion of the comprehensive plan by the city, and we haven't done that. So that might be one of the things that we assure that we do this year. As it relates to our capacity, our resources, our finances in 2017, the near-term pressures we really have are, I think, I can safely say, sort of externally imposed. We have a challenge in the general fund related to the Stanford fire contract and Stanford's desire to renegotiate the contract in some ways that could have about a $2 million effect on us. We've had some court rulings related to, not just for us, but statewide, related to streetlights needing to not be funded out of the Utilities Electric Fund, so we've brought those last year back into the general fund, but that's an ongoing $2 million impact. And then the track watch means restriction, both between the guards and the, what we're taking a look at as it relates to replacement camera system is about a $2 million a year impact on the city. And those are the bigger, bigger drivers as we work with finance on the fiscal year 2018 budget. The long-term pressures, as the council knows very well, are essentially workforce-related and they're constrained by the state in many ways as far as some of the flexibility that we have. And that's both in the realm of our pension liabilities, it relates to unfunded pension liabilities, and our other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEBs, our healthcare liability. Now, we've done some good work comparatively over the years. We have a trust for OPEB funding. It was $33 million. In March of 2008, it is currently $84.6 million in 2016. So it has grown in that period of time. That's money essentially available as an offset to the unfunded liability we have in this area. And for this year, the council has directed, and I think in the next, within the next month, will be coming forward to set aside $2.1 million as the beginning of a pension trust fund or a 115 trust fund towards the unfunded liability of our pension. It's a small step, but it's a first step. And then in the realm of long-term pension costs, just sharing with the council again, we have sort of in the, in the non-legacy area of the, of the pension benefits, what are called Tier Two and Tier Three employees that have different older retirement ages and a lesser annual year percentage. We're now at a point where 38% of our miscellaneous employees are in either Tier Two and Three, and 21% of our safety employees are in that area. As it relates to our staff, our own focus and initiative on really ensuring that we have a high-performing workforce. We have the issue of the recruitments we've got to successfully pursue this year. And then we have sort of the background challenge of just really being an employer of choice to make sure that we can employ and attract the best folks to work here in the city. We're going to have to be looking more and more at how we can be more flexible, how we deal with some of the travel, mobility, commute issues that all of us share as it relates to our workforce, how it is that we may be taking some, I wouldn't say risks exactly, but we may have younger and somewhat less experienced, but exceedingly bright and motivated folks coming into our workforce. And, you know, particularly in the public realm where there can be a lot of sort of pressure and criticism in the public, we're going to have to, we're going to have to have some patience as we bring folks on who I, who I, I'm quite excited about a lot of the new people who are also coming into our organization. And how we invest in our culture and our learning organization, and we have some big systems investments we have to make in our enterprise resource, resource program, which is basically our core financial management system. That'll be a big issue we're going to bring to the council this year. How we add some meaningful and much more flexible HR modules. I want to really be looking at a much more robust constituent relationship management system that cuts across lines, and we need to continue to enhance our 3-1-1 systems with the public. So the comprehensive plan will be adopted in 2017. And I was discussing even with the mayor just this morning, you know, how we've set a schedule where the council vision for the plan can be defined fully within the first half of 2017. There will still be follow-up work with the, with the EIR review components, and it'll ultimately have to come back to the council. But we're going to be hopefully working with the council to establish some really dedicated times for you to work on the comprehensive plan itself. The target for the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, is that they will complete its work in May 2017. And so we really want to track how the council makes the big decisions in parallel with them wrapping up their work. Secondly, in the area of mobility, in many ways, there's nothing in the non-automobile area that is more important than the, the Caltrain right-of-way that we have in our city. And there are a lot of parallel issues that the city's been dealing with through its rail committee and at the council. But I would really encourage that the council think about adopting a vision for grade separation this year. There are going to be other procedural issues, but to start to get really clear about exactly what we mean and what, where we see these things taking place and what, what the design is. That would be in advance of some of the continuing studies we would do. But we, we need to be paying attention to our ability to compete for dollars and to make some other policy decisions. Next, in the realm of parking, we've been doing a lot. We've worked on RPP. We have two new RPP programs that will be coming to the council in the first quarter this year. Evergreen Park will be before you shortly, followed by South Gate. And I think we have some updates to, in review to the Downtown RPP. But we will be bringing some, the results of an in-house parking study we've been doing with the assistance of outside consultants. It really will be looking at how we start to move to price parking in a way, as a way to really incent alternatives. And I think that will, that will be an interesting discussion. I think it's something that absolutely is going to have to happen, in particular if we really want to make progress on, on alternative modes of transportation. And so again, in 2017, how we accelerate our efforts in TDM, we continue to focus on mobility as a service, you know, how, you have, you have an outstanding directive related to a transportation tax. You may want to be thinking, actually, I think, about what are some other decisions we make that generate funding in the city that could be used? We had the Mercedes dealership, to the extent that that project comes back at all, you're going to be faced with some other challenges as it relates to hotels. Clearly, if we could move forward with some new recommendations related to parking for the long term ultimately, that can generate revenues that could be used to really incentivize TDM in some, some big ways. As VTA considers service changes that will negatively affect transit, our staff has been analyzing the Palo Alto Free Shuttle and will be shortly bringing forward concepts for additional services for your consideration to complement other existing and proposed routes. There's a lot of different ways to be thinking about shuttles. We look at, we would look at working with council on, and there's a potential to harness some of the county's Measure B Transit Operations funding. So we'll need to work closely with VTA, both to preserve existing transit service and access funding. And again, over the next six weeks roughly, the council will have at least one community session, I think, and maybe another study session with council before that. We're working, we've got an FTA Mobility On Demand grant at the end of 2016 of $250,000, which is going to help us develop our commuter wallet app over the next two years. So that's an app that will allow people to pay for transit, parking, bike share, et cetera, all in one, and enable, and will better enable us to incentivize trips by alternate transportation and, and better monitor commuting patterns, getting, getting us closer to our goal of 30% reduction in SOV trips in downtown. And then the city's traffic signal system was completely upgraded in 2015 and 16, and this year we began implementing coordinated traffic signal timing. Hopefully, you've noticed improvements on San Antonio, Middlefield and Embarcadero. Next year, we'll be turning our attention to Alma University and Charleston-Arastodero. In 2016, we saw the construction of a 70-unit affordable housing project on El Camino Real. And there was ongoing construction of 180 units of faculty housing on Stanford lands as part of the Mayfield Development Agreement. And of course, Stanford has 2,000 units of graduate student housing in Escondida Village on the Stanford campus plan. The city has pending applications for new rental housing, including an application for 50 units in two buildings at 3001 El Camino Real, otherwise known as the old Mike's, Mike's Lot, and a potential pilot project of 60 small units at the Page Mill, El Camino Corner, formerly the VTA Lot. My understanding is we've just received an application for that. Over the past 40 years or so, the city's averaged about 160 new dwelling units per year, and a lot of the housing that gets built in Palo Alto is replacement housing, specifically new single-family homes replacing older homes. We saw about 100 such projects last year. The council did see a focus on excessive accessory dwelling units last year, and we'll be coming back to council within the next month on a draft ordinance. And you've been, we've been working to adjust housing impact fees that generate funding to support affordable housing. Right now, we have about an estimated $8 million in uncommitted funds we could make available for development. That's outside of the funding that the city has scheduled towards the Buena Vista project. But I would hope that we're able to advance the housing possibilities next year, almost at the end. Okay, in the realm of infrastructure, I think the big story, just as time is money. We have projects approved by you, they're underway. We expect that Highway 101 overcrossing by the end of this year, we would have completed our environmental clearances and have about 65% of our design completion. Fire Station Number Three, we would complete design and have, and 30% of the construction underway. For the public safety building, we would complete the sequo environmental review and preliminary design. And the, for certain, the golf course itself will reopen in 2017 to play, to a new links course that we think will without a doubt be the best destination public golf course on the peninsula. And then just some kind of wrap-up kind of issues that are out there. Fiber is one, a lot of different moving aspects to that. I think, I think it would be good for the city to really define our strategy this year going forward. We have decisions to make on the animal shelter, which will be coming to you this year. And the SCAP itself will be bringing back some pretty detailed SIPs, as we call them, strategic implementation plans, which will actually be dealing with what it will take to make some progress over the next three years. And then I've been talking with our staff a little bit about us being, being a cool, smart city. We started, we spent last year working through a collaborative approach with our staff team on smart city initiatives, how we really position ourselves to use technology as best as possible, a lot of strategic ways to improve services and livability in our city, but didn't want to lose sight of that and just focus on a top-down organizational piece. So I offset this with what, what is happening with the Cool Block, more of a grassroots sort of uprising from neighbors to sort of really make, add, add to what our neighborhood groups already do as far as making our city the great place it is to live. do as far as making our city the great place it is to live. And then I will end with just this, which is, after all those projects, let's just not forget what is the city but the people. Let's have fun in 2017, echoing the mayor's comments the other night. And that's the end of my presentation.
We don't have any public comment, do we? So we're back to council for any questions, comments?
Jim, I think this is very helpful, very comprehensive. And I presume you're going to get it out, it'll be on our website and so forth?
Yes, we will.
In that form?
Yes.
Because it's, you know, it's very encouraging to see us moving in a positive direction.
It's exciting, isn't it?
Good for you and the staff.
All right. Seeing no further comments, we'll move to the special orders of the day. And our first special order of the day is a proclamation of the council of the City of Palo Alto honoring the volunteer service of Sherri Furman. And I've asked Councilmember Holman to read the proclamation.
Thank you, and happy to do so. Whereas Sherri Furman has graciously volunteered her time to serve the citizens of the City of Palo Alto and has led many projects and efforts which have contributed to the betterment of our community. And whereas, as Chair of the Midtown Residents Association, or MRA, she organized many successful events such as the annual community ice cream social with council members, commissioners, and staff scooping ice cream, and the Midtown Multicultural Potluck. And whereas, Sherri served as webmaster for the MRA and utilized the website to share the history of Midtown and notify residents of semi-annual general meetings on topics of community interest. And whereas Sherri, as Chair of the MRA, worked tirelessly to improve the city. Some noticeable and notable accomplishments under her leadership, installation of art pieces at Hoover Park, bathrooms at Seal Park, and the development of Scott Meadows, a new section of Greer Park. And whereas Sherri served as Chair of Palo Alto Neighborhoods, generally known as PAN, an independent umbrella group for Palo Alto neighborhoods whose purpose is to enhance communications and mutual support, where she chaired forums on housing and retail and also distributed surveys to residents to obtain feedback on civic engagement and community priorities. And whereas Sherri has shared her valuable knowledge and insight on citywide committees and task forces covering topics such as the Coverley Community Center, the Comprehensive Plan Housing Element, Website Advisory Group, and the Midtown East-West Bicycle and Pedestrian Connector Project. And whereas Sherri has been an active leader in our community and is continually recognized for her extraordinary generosity, caring, and commitment to the citizens of Palo Alto. Now therefore, H. Gregory Scharf, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby gratefully extend appreciation to Sherri Furman for her years of faithful service to the City of Palo Alto.
So councilmembers, if any of you'd like to say a few words. Karen, do you want to kick us off?
Well, just in addition to what's in the proclamation, I've known Sherri for a number of years since, I'm an old, long-timer here, and have just watched you in action and seen how effective you are, how committed you are, how engaged you are, and how respected you are as a leader in this community. And your accomplishments and volunteering efforts have been just greatly recognized and appreciated, and it's really time that we do this in a public manner. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Niss.
So Sherri, I don't think we'd be eating as much ice cream as we do without you. So congratulations for the work, especially you've done with the Midtown Residents Association, pulling that together. You and Annette have always done an amazing amount to keep that group together, and we so enjoy the things you do. And I in particular enjoy the Ice Cream Social.
Thank you.
Keep it up. I know it's hard work.
I intend to.
I know it is hard work. It's appreciated.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I just want to say this is very well-deserved recognition. I mean, you've been an activist citizen for a long time, and it really has benefited not just Midtown, but I think the city overall in your work on the Coverley Plan, on our housing element, and probably a lot of other things that I'm not mentioning. But, you know, I've really just gotten to know you in the last couple of years, so I just personally wanted to say thank you. And thank you for what you'll do in the future too, as we go forward.
Thank you, Tom.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Hey Sherri. Yeah, pretty much what Tom said. Thank you very much for everything. You're awesome. I think big pieces of the city would grind to a halt without you. So thanks a lot, and richly deserved.
Councilmember Wallback.
I'll second everything that was said before me, and without repeating it all, just say I appreciate you keeping us on our toes and keeping us honest and, you know, always being frank and, you know, making sure that the city is really working for everybody. Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Well, we've served together on PAN for a few years when I was President of the College of Municipal Residents Association, so seen your work, seen your dedication, and really appreciate it. So just want to echo what everyone else just said as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sherri, I wanted to echo what everyone said. We really do appreciate your service to the community. You know, it wouldn't be as great a community without you doing what you do. And I'll second about the Ice Cream Social. It is a fantastic event and really appreciated by the community. So thanks for all you do. So, yeah. Do, did you have your light on?
I did.
Try your light, because I didn't come on. Okay, now it's on. So I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Councilmember Koo.
Sherri, I just want to say thank you so much for the years of dedication and also for guiding me when I joined the Emergency Preparedness Program. So thank you so much for all your work.
You're welcome.
So Sherri, before I come down and give you the proclamation, I wanted to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Well, I want to, of course, thank all of you as well as the three members, because I know this proclamation actually started last year and I was out of town. So I also want to thank former Mayor Burt and councilmembers Burman and Schmidt for participating in this. And congratulations to our new councilmembers as well. I've been doing this for over 20 years now, and it's a labor of love, and I do it because I believe in neighborhoods. And some of you have worked in neighborhoods, and you know the importance of neighborhoods. We even call it out in our comp plan. And in this day of social media and everybody's faces in their phones, I still believe in the importance of face-to-face contact and of knowing your neighborhood and in being involved with your neighbors. And so in accepting this proclamation, which I deeply appreciate, I'm also doing so on behalf of all the neighborhood leaders who have worked on behalf of their neighborhood to bring issues that they know intimately that are going on in their neighborhood to you. You can't know everything that's going on in every neighborhood. So I think it's important that we bring to you the individuality of the neighborhoods, and I want to keep those, you know, those neighborhoods strong. And I also have to give a shout-out to my mentor and friend and cohort for these 20-some-odd years, Annette Glencuff, who's been, you know, my mentor and taught me everything I know and still teaches me, you know, to this day. So thank you so very much. I do appreciate it.
Well, again, we all appreciate your service.
No cellphones in this room. Thank you, Hillary. Mike, I know these people. Yay. One of my buddies. You know, I hate having my picture taken.
All right. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. And the next special order of the day is, I think we had one that we took off, is the presentation of the accreditation of the Urban Forestry Program by the Society of Municipal Arborists. Oh, you know, I did forget. Oh, I didn't see this. Take that back. We have a bunch of public speakers on behalf of you, Sherri. All right, so the first person is Annette Glencuff, to be followed by Becky Sanders.
Okay, first of all, let me congratulate Mayor Scharf and Vice Mayor Niss for their appointments for this year, and welcome the new councilmembers, Fine, Koo, and Tanaka. Now, you guys stole my thunder in speaking about Sherri, but tonight I'm speaking as the Vice Chair of the Midtown Residents Association and for our steering committee. And again, you've taken all my thunder, but we also want to thank the council for recognizing Sherri for her many, many years of contribution to the City of Palo Alto and all the hard work and positive energy for almost two decades, as I met Sherri in 95 when the Midtown Residents Association was just getting started. From one email that came along, it's, I just want to quote, "It's not that often that good people are recognized for their efforts, and Sherri really deserves it." The commendations that Councilmember Holman read speak to Sherri's accomplishments and to the many task forces and advisory groups over the years that she's participated in, as well as the Midtown Residents Association and Palo Alto Neighborhoods, and Becky will speak to that in a minute. It is a gigantic effort to be a Chair of anything, and especially of a neighborhood association, preparing monthly agendas, responding to dozens of emails, and I know you councilmembers can really resonate to that, and tackle the issues that face our neighborhoods, such as any potential developments in the Midtown Shopping Center for 2017. Thank you also in recognizing Sherri, you are recognizing the role of neighborhoods in the City of Palo Alto, for building community with our newsletters, events, and general meetings, Neighborhood Watch, which is incorporated into Emergency Preparedness, which also is Crime Watch, for vetting local issues brought to the steering committee, and strength in numbers in getting these to council, for developing local leadership in our neighborhoods. And some of you came out of neighborhoods, so that's proof of the pudding, for projects, for art, for bathrooms, for park landscaping, bulletin boards, the height of floodwalls on Manadara Creek, ground-floor retail in Midtown, and working with our local merchants, and I could go on for a long time. So these are all neighborhood roles, and Midtown has greatly benefited from Sherri's efforts and leadership. So thank you, council.
Thank you. Becky Sanders, to be followed by Mike Nolan.
Good evening. As co-chair of the Palo Alto Neighborhoods Association, I am delighted that council has chosen to commend Sherri Furman for her service to the community. Two years ago, I suddenly became aware that my Little Ventura neighborhood was changing in ways that I could not fathom. I noticed an erosion in the fabric of the community and in the quality of life there. I started poking around, and it was then that I was introduced by Annette Glencuff to Sherri Furman. I had worked with Annette on some safety videos. When I met Sherri, I sensed a force to be reckoned with. She was and is a strong woman, a strong female role model for civic engagement. Now, my mom and I passed out donuts at the precinct on vote-in day, and when I met Sherri, I thought she'd more likely be passing out civics textbooks along with a lecture on civic duty at any polls that she served. She was and is a soapboxer, and I admire her fierce giddy-up tremendously. Sometimes we have to meet fire with fire, and she is a fireball. Sherri challenged me to start the Ventura Neighborhood Association, and Annette and she have mentored me these two years. Now the Ventura Neighborhood Association has a 60-plus-person listserv, and we can point to several wins our community has experienced due to citizen civic engagement as a direct result of Sherri's mentoring of me. Her organizational skills, her leadership, her passion, her fire, her commitment, and her integrity are beyond dispute. I will forever be grateful to Sherri and for her work through the Palo Alto Neighborhoods Association for shining a bright light for me to find my way to civic engagement and to a deeper sense of connection to and love for my community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Nolan, to be followed by Catherine Martin, oh, was that a different item? Mike Nolan is the final speaker.
Hi, thanks. So I've lived in Midtown since 1979, and I just want to point out that I want to thank the Midtown Residents Association, I guess in general, for being there, and Sherri specifically for being there, because having that, her and that group there really adds to the quality of our life in Midtown, I think. It helps maintain some sort of fabric there. So anyway, thank you, Sherri. I really appreciate your service. And then I guess I also, iterating what Annette said, I'd like to say I appreciate you folks for recognizing Sherri, and by that, by recognizing the importance of these community organizations and these networks of citizens in the various neighborhoods. It's really important to us. It's important to maintain that fabric of what I've come to think of as Palo Alto. So I know there's differences of opinion about ways things should be done, but the fact that you're here and willing to listen to these groups and to citizens like myself, I really appreciate it. So thank you, and thanks, Sherri, and thanks a lot.
Thank you. And now on to the next item, item number five, presentation of the accreditation of the Urban Forestry Program by the Society of Municipal Arborists.
Is that the end of the card?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize your urban forestry program. My name is Gordon Mann, and I represent the Society of Municipal Arborists, the SMA, which is the International Professional Association for Urban Forestry. I'm here to recognize and present the SMA Urban Forestry Program accreditation to the City of Palo Alto's Urban Forestry Program. I've had the pleasure to professionally meet and work with Walter Passmore on the California Urban Forest Advisory Council, and I have known Dave Docter, Steve Scott, Dave Sanders, some of our other employees for many years through our professional activities. I share your pride in your program and staff members caring for the trees in Palo Alto. The SMA accreditation is the highest recognition for municipal urban forestry programs. To obtain this recognition, the agency's program must meet seven requirements. Have at least one ISA-certified arborist on staff with an ISA-certified municipal specialist preferred, and you have 10. Have a local forest master plan approved by the appropriate local body. You have your urban forest master plan adopted in 2015. Be a current Tree City USA. This must be attained annually to maintain your accreditation, and Palo Alto's been a Tree City USA for 29 years. Have received a Tree City USA Growth Award in at least one of the past five years. Palo Alto's most recent was in 2016. Show acknowledgement of TCIA-accredited tree care companies and specifications when contracts are advertised for tree care companies. Your contract specifications contain language to encourage tree care industry association accredited companies to bid on contracts. Incorporate the American National Standards Institute Z133 safety standards in the department crew and contract operations. Your safety program and contract specifications clearly acknowledge the importance of safety and reference Z133. Incorporate the American National Standards Institute A300 tree care performance standards in the department pruning specifications and work activities. Your maintenance specifications and construction requirements are written in accordance with the ANZ A300 tree management standards, of which there are 10 parts ranging from pruning to vegetation management to construction management. Palo Alto submitted their application and documentation for accreditation on April 12, 2016. After the rigorous peer review and audit performed by the SMA Accreditation Committee on August 7, 2016, Palo Alto became only the 15th accredited program, 14 in the United States and one in Canada, joining only two other cities in California, Sacramento and Santa Monica. To meet the requirement for the Urban Forest Management Plan, there are 11 criteria you have met. Operational goals achieved through your annual budget and program objectives. The agency's personnel, equipment budget, and other resources aligned and supported to meet these goals as achieved through your budget allocation each year. Designation of trees for which the municipality is responsible. You have your street trees, utility trees, and your tree protection ordinance. Continuing care of municipally-owned trees, your annual maintenance program. Identification and removal of municipally-owned trees that are past their useful lifespan, your inventory and inspection program handle that. Planting of new and replacement trees is appropriate. Your planting program in partnership with Canopy is excellent. Progress towards educating the general public, municipal employees, commercial and utility tree workers, and others as appropriate concerning the benefits and care of trees. Your staff in partnership with Canopy again accomplished this well. Actions taken enforcement of tree protection ordinances, zoning, and construction regulations. zoning, and construction regulations. Your code enforcement process meet this well. Inventory or other systems for identification and management of tree resources, problems, and opportunities. Your tree inventory is up to date and kept current. Identification of program's current objectives and goals, the program managers' and budget review process, and local government approving body. The city council recognition of staff's efforts and your budgetary support. This accreditation is not a one-time award or snapshot. The accreditation/recognition period is valid for one year. The intent is to encourage high-level urban forest management following the accreditation criteria. Annual review is approved with submitting supporting documentation that the criteria are continued to be met. I'm very happy to, with great honor, recognize the city of Palo Alto and present the SMA Urban Forestry Program accreditation to the city of Palo Alto. Would Mayor Greg Scharf and urban forester Walter Passmore please join me in accepting the award?
So, as most of you know, over the holidays, we had an incident with swastikas in our city, and I, we sent out a message from the mayor on this issue, but I wanted to read it into the record so everyone can hear it. So, as part of our last meeting of 2016, the city council adopted a resolution reaffirming Palo Alto's commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protected community. The values articulated in the resolution are ones that we as Palo Altons recognize as emblematic of our community, but recently we have been reminded that these values need to be continually reinforced. Over the holiday break, we learned that a number of swastika symbols were drawn on signs within Palo Alto and at Stanford. These symbols of bigotry and hate are disturbing. Of course, we must remain vigilant and speak out against such acts, and do everything we can to protect our community while remaining open and inclusive. One passage of the resolution speaks to this directly in states. The city of Palo Alto rejects bigotry in all its forms, including but not limited to Islamophobia, antisemitism, racism, nativism, misogyny, and homophobia. We should take great comfort that such occurrences are rare in Palo Alto. At first glance, this appears to have been the work of an individual, and there have been no further incidents reported, but we cannot be complacent when we experience such acts. Our police department continues to investigate the incidents and is doing everything they can to identify those responsible and bring them to justice. To that end, we encourage anybody with information to contact the police department's 24-hour dispatch center at 650-329-2413. Anonymous tips can be emailed to paloalto@tipnow.org or sent via text message or voicemail to 650-383-8984. As Palo Altons, we can all affirm our city's commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community through our actions and words each and every day. Thank you. All right, I think we could just take a five-minute break. Oh, wait, sorry. I have one more card on SMA accreditation that I didn't see. I think I included it up there. Catherine Martin, you wanted to speak. I apologize.
What you had to say was very important, and we thank you for that. So, good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niss, councilmembers, and City Manager Keen. On behalf of the Board of Canopy and the whole Canopy community, I too wanted to congratulate the Urban Forestry Program and Walter Passmore in particular, and the council, of course, for the accreditation. In an interview that Walter gave to City Trees, a publication on urban forestry, he talked about some of the reasons that the Palo Alto Tree Program is remarkable, and you have heard the pretty exhaustive list of criteria that need to be met in order to be recognized. But, of course, the vision of the founders of Palo Alto certainly was of a city among trees, but as John Muir said, any fool can destroy trees because they don't move, they can't run. So, it does take a wise community working together to protect, grow, and renew the mature forests that we enjoy today, and that's what we have in Palo Alto. A city council that understands and values the myriad benefits trees afford us, a very skilled and dedicated staff. You've heard about the 10 certified arborists on staff. That's quite amazing. And finally, the third really important component is the community at large, the community that cares, that is vigilant, that is vocal, and that supports Canopy. We are very fortunate that Walter accepted the offer that the council, or rather, the city made to him, extended to him four years ago. He provides the leadership that we so much needed, and the program has progressed tremendously under his watch. It is not an easy job. Trees are living organisms, so sometimes they get sick, they die, they fall, they need to be removed sometimes. Very hard choices have to be made. Development pressures abound. Walter leads the Urban Forestry Program with his mild-mannered way, but he also has a very sure hand because he uses science and the best professional practices to guide him. This is something that the whole community really appreciates. So, I also wanted to take the opportunity to invite you all to the 21st Mayor's Tree Planting Ceremony that will take place on the 26th of January at Mitchell Park Center. We will plant one tree for Mayor Scharf. It's going to be your second tree. And that will start at 5:15 PM on the 26th. And right after that, we'll plant another tree next to it for retiring Police Chief Dennis Burns. So, you'll find all of the information and please RSVP from the Canopy website, and it's canopy.org. So, again, congratulations to the council, to Public Works, to the city as a whole, to Walter, to his colleagues. One of his colleagues, Courtney Sham, is here tonight also. This is quite an achievement, and we're very, very proud to be associated with the Urban Forestry Program here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's take a five-minute break. additions and deletions. And Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I, just as, since we're going to merge into City Managers' comments here in a minute, if the council's okay, I'd like point of privilege here on item, consent item number 17 that we have in here, which is the Policy and Services Committee recommendation related to city council priority suggestions in preparation for the annual council retreat. One of the recommendations that are put in here was to have the mayor appoint some councilmembers to work with the city manager to identify facilitator for a second subsequent retreat meeting. And I did want to let you know, we're on a, like, really tight schedule, and the facilitators I could get in here were this week. I already asked the mayor and vice mayor to think about being the people who could sit in that meeting, so I would just, I would like to just acknowledge to the council, when you go ahead and approve this as is, that we've already started going in that direction, and that's all I have to report.
All right, so I have something under additions, changes, additions, and deletions. So, on item nine on consent, we have a number of councilmembers that have raised questions. Unfortunately, the questions were raised after the deadline to raise the questions, to get written responses. So, first, I'm going to, as friendly as I can admonish all of you, to get your questions in early so that staff has the opportunity to answer the questions. I think that's really important if we're going to run efficient meetings. And the next thing we're going to do is we're going to take item nine, and we're going to move it over two weeks from now, because we don't have a council meeting on Martin Luther King Day, and we'll have that item, and any council member who has questions on that, you should submit them in writing, and the city manager and staff will answer those questions. I don't know if you have any further comments on that.
No, so that would be the meeting of the 23rd, is the date? January 23rd?
Right. So, I can't actually remember the procedure. Do I need a motion to move number nine to?
I can't remember it either. I think you, I think you should take a vote in the absence of memory.
All right. So, I will make the motion that we move item nine to, what date is that? Is it like?
Two weeks.
January 23rd. Do I have a second? All right, a second? If we could vote on the board? It's good practice. All right, there we go. And that passes unanimously.
They're all bigger and can read to you.
All right. Now, we will, are there other city manager comments?
Yes, sir.
All right.
A few items. So, in relation to the weekend storms, while the city was well-prepared overall, the storm over the weekend had less rainfall than we had anticipated and had relatively few incidents. Public Works crews were out all weekend making sure sandbag stations were restocked, monitoring creek levels, checking to make sure debris was cleared. We had a number of power outages yesterday through the night and into this morning due to the storm and windy conditions. The outages were primarily caused by downed trees falling on power lines. As of this morning, crews were still working to bring power back to all, though most of the city has been restored. The largest outage occurred in the Midtown area around 4:50 AM this morning. Approximately 875 residents were affected, and our crews working with Public Works to safely remove trees restored service. There were also some large tree branches that blocked the Caltrain tracks for a period of time yesterday. Public Works also responded to the West Bay Shore, San Francisco Creek site to assist Caltrans, the state highway department, on the east Palo Alto side of the creek. A mass of debris had accumulated, and the Caltrans crews removed as much as possible last night and expected to continue today. Of course, we kept a close eye on the creek water levels all weekend, which stayed well within the banks, and all of our updated information was posted on our storm page at citypaloalto.org/storms. As you can imagine, this is a good example of one of the things that I was mentioning in the year-end report about the, in one sense, ordinary but extraordinary things that our staff is doing, just the coordination this weekend, the worry, the anxiety, the preparation between Office of Emergency Services, Public Works, our communication folks, utilities, interim chief Ron Watson and his team in police. I had kind of constant conversations with folks, and, you know, it's sort of all dressed up with nowhere to go in the end of the day, which is always a good thing that we didn't have that sort of a problem, but it's pretty phenomenal what, we're really, really lucky to have the staff we have. This, next item reports to Coal Ridge Avenue at Cowper Street, and this is a traffic safety pilot project. I love this one. This is quintessential Palo Alto, right here. Last April, our staff started a six-month traffic safety pilot project at the intersection of Coal Ridge Avenue and Cowper to address neighborhood concerns about traffic safety. The pilot project included a temporary traffic circle, high-yellow, high-visibility crosswalks, and advanced yield lines. At the conclusion of the pilot, our staff collected feedback through mail and in-person surveys, and while safe routes to school leaders and parents of the nearby Walter Hayes Elementary School submitted very positive feedback, the survey results were evenly split, with half in favor of making the traffic circle permanent and half requesting its removal. So, our staff has decided that the existing two-way stop configuration was generating the bulk of the skepticism around the traffic circle, so plans to leave the circle, we plan to leave the circle in place and convert the intersection to an all-way yield configuration, and we'll leave that in place for six months and then do another survey. As there are several roundabouts and traffic circles planned as part of our upcoming Neighborhood Traffic Safety and Bike Boulevard projects, this pilot offers a valuable opportunity to refine the designs of these intersections, and we're really relying on the feedback that we get from the public. Just a reminder, Martin Luther King Day, as the mayor just mentioned, is next week. Monday, the 16th, and our, the city's Youth and Community Services will hold a celebration event to pay tribute to the life of Dr. King on Monday, January 16th, from 11 AM to 2 PM. The event will include guest speakers and local organizations, activities for youth and teens, music and dance performances, and a legacy exhibition displaying different periods of the civil rights movement. Organizations participating in this year's event include Project Safety Net, Outlet Youth, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, AIM High, the King Papers Project at Stanford, and Stanford's Muslim Student Union with performances by Dance Connection and School of Rock. That will be at Mitchell Park next Monday, January 16th, from 11 to 2. The VTA has scheduled a public meeting here in the city council chambers on Thursday, January 19th, at 6 PM to discuss their next network plan for bus service changes. We've also invited VTA to present to the city council at a study session. I believe it's still planned for January 23rd, and we'll be preparing a comment letter to the VTA board for the council's review in February. Secondly, on a different topic, Stanford University has scheduled a public meeting at Mitchell Park on Wednesday, January 25th, from 6 to 8 PM to discuss their pending application to Santa Clara County for a new general use permit, more affectionately called GUP, extending to the year 2035. We've also invited Stanford to present at city council, and they will do so at a study session on February 6, and we'll be preparing a comment letter in response to the county's notice that the EIR will be prepared. We expect to receive the county's notice this week, and we'll have a deadline to comment by the middle of February. And then Palo Alto Children's Theater experienced record-breaking attendance numbers in December 2016 with sold-out performance productions of The Lion, The Witch and the Wardrobe on the main stage, and The Gingerbread Boy in the Playhouse. The Teen Arts Council, which is an initiative of the Palo Alto Children's Theater, will host a movie night at Mitchell Park Teen Center on Friday, January 13th, Friday the 13th, at 7 PM. The Teen Arts Council will also have its next Open Mic Night at the Palo Alto Arts Center on Friday, February 10th, at 7 PM in collaboration with the Arts Center's Teen Takeover event. And other than just one more, welcome to the new council. Welcome to the new council. That's all I have to report.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, just one question. While it may seem frivolous, it's really not. The roundabouts that are being studied and put in as temporary basis in the neighborhoods, are the neighborhoods being informed that those will be landscaped because it does make a difference in perception?
I'll look into that. I don't know. I mean, I don't know that every design has the potential. Some of these are pretty small. I'll take a, but I'll share that with the staff. I clearly understand, and I think we noticed a big change in neighborhood attitude after the, this past year, getting those three circles we have in downtown north and elsewhere done, right?
Yeah, thank you. Just thought it might break the logjam. Thank you.
Let me ask a question.
Sure. Vice Mayor Niss?
Jim, because that roundabout you're discussing is not far from where I live, how was the, how were the comments received, or how were they initiated?
Well, my understanding is that there was both a, either a written or an email survey and actual conversation, so beyond that, I don't have the details.
Do you know how wide a radius?
I don't. I can get you that information, though. Could give you a little...
We're now onto oral communications, and I just wanted to make sure I have the right packet here. All right. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Esther Naginda.
Good evening, council members, and welcome, new members and old ones. I want to tell you all on one of your first meetings, you hear a lot of criticism up here, but understand that underneath it all, we all appreciate very much your time, your effort, and your dedication. And thank you, thank you, thank you. What I wanted to say was, you know, I'm pretty much concerned about housing, and I must say that our society has progressed a lot since the, like, 13th and 14th and 15th centuries. There used to be laws in England that if you came to a new place looking for work and you rented someplace for less than market value, whatever that was determined to be, that within 40 days, the authorities could pick you up and take you back to the place you came from, lest you become a charge on the welfare stock of the parish. We have come a long, long way. So, but you're still confronted with the problem of housing, and it's true that the, that the worst problem of the housing has come as a bad effect of the good idea of having a wonderful industrial workplace next to Stanford. And the bad effect was having the houses, not that there were too few of them, and not that there were too many jobs, but that the houses were too far away from the place where the people had to work, making all the people in between like a doormat that had to, that had to put up with many, many cars, and of course, we, so, what I want to say is, we should look at the, we should look at all the possibilities, and the first thing I would like to under, to state is that we have in today's paper, a note from the editor of the Post suggesting that we look to Moffett Field for housing and call on an issue. And I'd like to recommend that you all take that to heart. We owe those veterans a lot more than we're getting, and we've seen efforts in that arrangement. Karen and Pat Vert, they had parties. That's great. Great to acknowledge what we owe these veterans, but really, I think we, that the entire country should give them some housing so that they'd have some stability for those who have traumatic stress disorder, and a little leg up to those who are just trying to run their families. And so, I'm gonna recommend that you look into that, and recommend that the federal government install housing for all levels to be rented at an appropriate rent for the, our veterans. Thank you.
Esther Naginda, to be followed by Rita Verrel.
So, I have a power. Good evening, council members and members of the public. Congratulations to the new council members. So, the city manager was talking about storms today, and I'll just mention something about storms in the future. This is a map about the groundwater levels in Palo Alto. I'm not sure if you can see where the green zone is, but that's the FEMA flood zone. The red spots are contaminant plumes, and the blue lines, the blue contour lines are the groundwater levels. The very, the very first line that's there at, on the right-hand side, the large one, is 10 feet, and then the second one's 15 feet, and 20 feet, and so on. So, how do I? Thank you. Oh, okay. In this map, which is expanded, you can see the basements for the years, the basements that required de-watering for the years 2015 and 2016. You can see that they are located below the 15 feet, so they're, they're at less than 15 feet. Anything above, beyond 15 feet, you don't need to dewater, so all the ones that are, they're all the, all the basements are clustered at around 15 feet or less. This, could you please send this up? This study from, I don't know why it's out of, this study from the Journal of Hydrology from the USGS is very recent, so you won't find this information in the FEMA plans yet or in the state plans yet, but this study says that areas with coastal aquifers, here's some more, it's one for each, one for each, please, thank you. Areas with coastal aquifers that are less than four meters, which is 13 feet from the ground surface, should be considered for the potential to contribute to sea level rise, and it's cut there, but you'll have your copies, via groundwater emergence. As the sea level rises, and this, so these are storms in the future, as the sea level rises, the groundwater level rises also, and we're going to have, so this report says that underground structures such as basements, pipes, and tunnels will be increasingly vulnerable to flooding at sea level rise. And as you saw on the second map, all of the basements that are currently being constructed are within that zone. But this, this report is important beyond basements, because groundwater emergence is important for our development planning for the city and for emergency planning for the groundwater table is 13 feet or less. This includes, and I hope that when you look at the plans for the fire stations three and four, you remember that, to take into account the 13 feet, any underground construction, green infrastructure planning, and all our current vital infrastructures such as the wastewater plant. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ree, sorry, Rita Verrel, to be followed by Mike Mitchell, sorry, Mitchell Harnett.
So, I'm gonna follow up on what Esther was speaking about, and I wanted to thank everyone who came to the December Policy and Services Committee and made their voices known about the new regulations or recommendations that Public Works will be presenting to the full city council on 2/13. I would like to invite everyone who is concerned regarding the issue of de-watering and wasting of community groundwater to attend, and/or email the city council and make your views known. It's interesting that one of the items that was taken off the consent calendar concerns basements, and I thank you for taking this off the consent calendar, because these will be three large basements in an area where the ground level water, where the water table is seven feet. And I'm beginning to wonder if, what the process is, so that when someone builds a basement that is sitting in groundwater, and then sells that property to another person, do they have to under law disclose this, or is it buyer beware? Because I think since the city is beginning to be informed or is aware on their own of the potential for sea level rise and what the groundwater tables are in our area, is this not their responsibility to make sure that people who buy bases, houses with basements realize that additional long-term pumping or clearing of the groundwater around the basement is not allowed? So essentially, they are buying a large concrete boat in a water table. I would love to have Public Works, who it has been a pleasure to work with over this last year, and I want to particularly thank our city manager for suggesting a moratorium on de-watering until additional information on building techniques could be brought forward to reduce groundwater extraction. Thank you.
Mitchell Harnett?
Good evening, Happy New Year. My name is Mitchell Harnett. I'm from Study.com. Study.com is an online education service based out of Mountain View. For years, we've been looking for a good way to give back to the community, and we think we've finally done it. We've created this completely free program for anybody who works or lives in Mountain View to earn their college degree at no cost. We call it Mountain View Working Scholars, and we believe it has great potential throughout Silicon Valley. We know that the cost of living in Bay Area is getting more and more expensive, and a lot of people have had to put school on the back burner in order to stay living here. They've got family stuff coming up, and, you know, living here, paying rent, it just gets super expensive, and school can just add to those costs. So, we think this is probably the best way to give back to those people who may have always wanted to go back to school but never had the chance because of finances and other barriers, and we're really excited about this program. So I just wanted to invite you and anyone else in the audience to an open house we're having in, at Mountain View City Hall on January 19th at 6 p.m. to learn more about this program that we're really excited about and we think every city should learn more about. So thank you for your time, and definitely take this into consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, and now we're, the minutes, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes?
I don't like the minutes.
Second? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Fine abstaining.
I wasn't in those meetings.
You can still vote for the minutes, if you want, if you've, if you've read them. All right. The next thing is the consent calendar. Councilmember Wallback?
I'd actually like to pull item 11 from the consent calendar. Do we have, we need two other people to pull that? Okay, so you just say it, you don't put your lights on. Okay, so the three of you are pulling item number 11. All right. Now, I just cleared the lights, because I had a bunch of them, but I saw another light out of the corner of my eye. Is there any, any other lights that? Councilmember Fine?
I'd like to pull item 14.
Okay. Do we have anybody?
I'll second that.
And do we have a third for that? Item 14?
Yes.
Councilmember Ness?
Yes. Sorry. What was it?
All right, so we have two items, do I have them? So on item number 14, I don't think staff's prepared tonight to do that, so we'll just reschedule that to a time uncertain. On item number 11, I think we'll try and hear that. If it gets, take, it looks like it's gonna take too long, I may suggest we move it off, but I think we're gonna try and hear that tonight. So item number 11 becomes item number 19A, and we'll hear it first when we, when we get to the action items. All right. On the balance of the consent calendar, if I see no more lights, do we have a motion to approve?
Second?
Okay, that's been first and seconded. If we could vote on the board? Oh, there are speakers. You're absolutely right, you know. Thank you. All right. First speaker is Barbara Ryder.
Members of the council and mayor, I'm here to request that you withdraw my emailed January 1st request to remove from the consent calendar the item number 10, which is the contract with Tim Sheper for the Rinconada Pool. I want to let you know that on Friday, the eight of us, that were a mix of morning and midday lap swimmers, met with four of the Community Services Division staff, a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and with Tim Sheper to discuss the 2017 pool schedule. And I would say that we had a very successful dialogue about that schedule and that our, and our interest as committed stakeholders to continue working with the Community Services Department in terms of the expanded and balanced use for all five swim groups in, in our near future. Thank you.
Timothy Wong, to be followed by Jim Migdal.
Good evening, members of the city council, and again, I'd like to echo my appreciation for your dedicated services and the time you spend to work on our city. My name is Timothy Wong. I live in Palo Alto in South Gate, and I'm speaking on item 10 as well, and I just want to show my appreciation for your forward-looking in, in introducing more programs and extended hours for the, our pool in Palo Alto. Over the years, I've been able to use the Burgess Pool in Menlo Park and had the pleasure of working and working out at the pool, and it offers wonderful programs. I've been able to introduce friends to use the pool in Menlo Park, and I'd like to say that I think we're, we're gonna be good having the Team Sheper run our programs in Rinconada. So, I applaud you for looking forward and making some progress with our aquatic programs in Palo Alto. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Migdal, to be followed by Bonnie Packer.
Just very briefly on item 10, I am a Crescent Park resident for the last 10 years, and I'm an active swimmer. My kids learned to swim some at Rinconada, some at Burgess, and I've swum masters at Stanford, at Rinconada, and Burgess. And I'm really excited about the potential for expanding the access and use of the Rinconada Pool. I think it's a great resource, and I think that having additional programs, particularly for kids, for people who learn how to swim, is fantastic, and I switched, I mean, the program, I've been very, very happy with the program. I switched about four years ago to swim at Burgess after a couple of years in Rinconada, and Tim's done a great job in terms of creating very robust programs and access to things at all levels. So, glad that we're considering it. I think it'll be a great resource for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bonnie Packer?
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, and council members, and welcome, new council members. My name is Bonnie Packer, and I'm here speaking for the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, of which I am president. I sent you a letter asking you to remove item 14 from the consent calendar, which you did, so I thank you for that. And the reason we sent the letter and the two concerns we had was that we wanted the council to have the opportunity to consider again the recommendations that the Planning and Transportation Commission made last December, and the main concerns that we have relate to the viability of the Affordable Housing Fund. It's uncertain, and I think the economists and the commissioners were also uncertain as what the impact of the fees and some of the language and the ordinance would have on the viability of that fund. So, we thought the idea of, that the commissioners had to review, phase in the fees and to review them annually so you could understand better what, how this was affecting development in the city and affecting the, the growth of the Affordable Housing Fund. The other issue is that we felt that the ordinance in certain sections seems to favor the creation of onsite or offsite units in the case of the development. the creation of onsite or offsite units in the case of the development of for-purchase housing. And it makes it very hard for the developer to show why it isn't feasible to develop those units, and in fact discourages the payment of in-lu fees. So that is something that we hope that you look at when you do reconsider this ordinance and make sure that it fulfills the council's goals regarding affordable housing in Palo Alto. So, thank you for considering our comments and our concerns.
Thank you. And we have one more public speaker, Rita Verrell.
So, I just wanted to speak briefly on item number 10, the swim club. You know, I read through part of the documents, and I was astounded to find out that the city is subsidizing swimming lessons. There are, if I read it correctly, they're subsidizing private lessons, $26 a lesson, and, yeah, and regular swimming lessons, $11 a lesson. You know, I hope I read it correctly. I hope I'm not misleading you. I'm not sure why, when this document discusses the increased need and demand for swimming programs, that the city's general fund has to pay a subsidy. I'm sure that a lot of the kids who take swimming lessons can afford to pay for them. I'm sure some children or adults cannot, and then I think there should be a special scholarship set up for them, or some sort of way that everyone is able to take swimming lessons but not at a city subsidy. I have the community garden over at Eleanor Party Park, and when I attended a meeting on increase in fees on community gardens several years ago, I thought I heard that the city had a new policy, which was that the people who benefit from the services directly, like the gardeners, had to pay their way, that the city could not subsidize them. And the distinction was made between the community gardens and the city libraries, where the community gardens are only open to a certain number of people because the community garden plots are limited, whereas the city libraries are open to everyone. And I think the same thing is about the swimming lessons. I just don't understand in the city why a subsidy continues. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're back to the consent calendar, and there's a motion to approve the consent calendar without items 9, 11, and 14. If we could please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. All right, so now we'll move to item 19A, which is former item number 11, which is the Policy and Services Committee recommendation about the legislative priorities. Councilmember Walback, you pulled that item, and you have your light on?
Yes. Two things. One, I would, I'd basically like to remove one item from item 11. This is, of course, our legislative priorities that we're sending to our lobbyists in Sacramento and in Washington DC. There's one item in our, and it's actually tiered into different sections. You'll find this particularly on page 298 of our packet, attachment 11B, page 1 of 3. The highest level is active advocacy items, and letter D regards the minimum wage. I'll come back to that in a second. I'd like to see that one sent back to Policy and Services, where I think it needs a little bit more discussion before we establish it as a legislative priority. Also, I would like to add something under important priorities, the next section, an item H, which would basically reflect the legislative advocacy that would accompany the resolution that we passed last month, and I've sent sample language to the city clerk as well. I'd be happy to discuss each of those in greater detail, but I just wanted to give that a quick preview.
Was that a motion?
I'd be happy to make it as a motion.
Okay, well, then you need to get the language up there.
All right.
And then you need to get a second, so you need to say what it is and then...
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to pass our legislative priorities with two changes. The first being to remove active advocacy item D, which is at the state level exempt tipped employees from the minimum wage, and refer that back to Policy and Services for further discussion. And secondly, to add item H under important priorities with the language in front of us, which is oppose attempts to undermine rights of any group, whether by the federal government, or by coercing states or local government, or by weakening existing laws and enforcement thereof against harassment, discrimination, and hate crimes.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Okay. It's seconded by Councilmember Fine. Do you wish to speak to your, well, now that you seconded it, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Sure. I'll speak to the two major components, actually, all three of them. I'll start actually with C and just say, I think that, you know, this is a great set of legislative priorities with these couple of tweaks, and I think it's important that we do pass this tonight so that we can send a clear message, you know, whether it's city staff, the mayor representing us, or to our lobbyists, so it's clear what it is that we want the folk eye to be in Sacramento and in Washington DC when advocating on behalf of Palo Alto's interests. So I do want to make sure we pass this tonight. These, and going up the list here. So B, I think this, you know, again reflects the language and the intent of the resolution that we passed last month that was discussed by the mayor earlier this evening, and I hope that this is a non-controversial item among my colleagues. And as far as item A, that's probably the more controversial one, so I'll just speak to it a bit more. I'm not sure that this is exactly the language that the council or even the Policy and Services Committee really intended to be included. There are a few ways that the question, the complex, important, nuanced question of tipped employees and how that relates to the minimum wage could be addressed. It could be addressed through an exemption, as described here. It could be addressed through a change in the law whereby, say, employers could require tip sharing among, for instance, among waiters and back of the house or staff such as dishwashers. It could also be done with a total compensation where somebody would have to make the minimum wage, but the tips could be counted towards that. And so there are a number of options here, and my sense was that that variety of options didn't get as deep a discussion as it required at Policy and Services, and moving forward with this, I think is just premature. As Chair of Policy and Services, I'd be happy to make sure it gets a fair discussion and full discussion.
Councilmember Fine, will you speak to your second?
Thank you. So I also believe it's important to get this out the gate so that our lobbyists and staff know what our priorities are this year. As for item B, I agree with Councilmember Walback, and I commend this council for making sure and reaffirming that Palo Alto is an inclusive community. I think this really hits that home. For item A, I'm not sure this is the priority that we want to send, given the complex issue of minimum wage. This seems like we're trying to influence state policy for a single local decision, and I think that needs to be rethought at the Policy and Services level here in the city.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I guess as former Chair of Policy and Services, we had this discussion. I just wanted to speak to this a little bit. First of all, I have a concern with process, so we empower our committees, our council committees, to make decisions on the part of council. We had a unanimous vote on this generally. We take that guidance. I'm a little concerned that, you know, things that have been unanimously approved are on consent, and then we get here in council, we're going to add things on the fly, vote on them that night. And so I've just asked my colleagues to consider the process and the precedent we're sitting here tonight. In terms of specifics on this one, you know, we had packed chambers when this came up, and we heard a lot from our business community. I think, I think the exploring tipped, again, this is what we're asking our lobbyists to kind of explore and discuss. It's not a statement that we support this position, and it would come back to council for any decision. I think, I think this item was added by our Vice Mayor, Niss, who really heard a lot, took to heart, I guess, what we're hearing from a lot of the business owners. So, you know, so basically for those two reasons, I think on process grounds, I'm not going to support doing this right now in this way.
Councilmember Tanaka?
So, I think part B makes a lot of sense, and I want to applaud that for being highlighted. I think for A, I definitely would want to make sure that the business community, especially restaurant owners, also had a say in this as well when it's revisited. So that, I think that's my only ask about point A, because I do know that a lot of, especially restaurant owners, would be very concerned about this one.
Councilmember Koo?
I don't have anything to say on these particular ones, but I have something else that I want to pull. Is this appropriate time, or is it later on?
It's now.
Okay.
You had your light on.
So, on the active advocacy items, item A, on a pilot basis, authorize Palo Alto and potentially the surrounding area as a place for autonomous vehicle testing. I'd like to have that one removed.
Does it need to make a motion?
Like to move to have that removed from the active advocacy items for the 2017 legislative priorities.
I'm not going to accept that as a friendly amendment, but I'm open to persuasion on it.
So you need a second.
What was I making amendment to?
Yes, you were, so what you're doing is you're making an amendment to his motion, because we only have one motion on the floor at a time, if that's what you want to do. And you need a second, and seeing no second, we'll move on. Councilmember Niss?
So, Councilmember DuBois is absolutely right. I felt pretty adamantly about this, and I think I carried on at some length at that meeting. So, what I would suggest on this, Councilmember Walback, is if you're willing to split this into A and B and C, so we could vote on A separately from B and C, I would be comfortable doing that. Could you informally let me know if you'd be comfortable with that?
I would be okay with splitting it, and would like to speak to A before we do vote on it.
Okay. So, so my request is to bifurcate the motion. I think I've said pretty clearly before, and if we had any real minutes, of course, it would be in the real minutes what I had said that evening. And I do intend to come, Tom and I have promised this for some time. We will get back with the real minutes. So, I think I've indicated where I would be on A, and I'm fine with B and C.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
I actually have a question, right, on, and it's on number A, which is, you know, I think Councilmember, I mean, I think we want to get this done tonight, right? I think Councilmember Walback's comments on the language of A are valid, but I have a question, which is, I mean, we're giving direction to our, you know, legislative partner here, right? The language that's in there right now, is that sufficiently constraining that that prevents them from advocating for sort of other solutions in this area in terms of tip sharing and stuff like that? I mean, how, does that say, that's where it means, does that allow them to entertain other kinds of approaches to the same problem, or is it very specifically, you know, tipped employees don't get minimum wage?
My, Councilmember Phil Seth, the members of the council, my reading of this is it's limited to the language that is there.
Okay.
And even with that, we could be in a situation where we would come back from our legislative lobbyists, and we may need to report back to the council. Say, say if it, if it was, if this were here, I mean, if this were removed, or if it was still in there, we could, we could very well be in a situation where we would come back and our lobbyists would say, our sense is, this isn't going to fly, or there isn't the right sponsor, or whatever it is. So, even if there were some alternate suggestions, I think those would be things that we would have to come back to the council on before we would pursue anything. And I would always point out, as you notice, and I think the mayor knows this well, that we always have a standing item on our agenda for legislative matters, so that if we did need on any given council meeting to put an item before you so that you could take action on it, we always anticipate that possibility.
Got it. I wonder, so, I mean, the simplest thing is probably to withdraw, just to strike it as suggested, but I wonder if it's possible that maybe there's some alternate language, because the issue is, you know, we're trying to address this issue of, you know, some employees, right, make, you know, many times the minimum wage because of tips, whereas other ones don't, and so how much sense does it make to sort of have one size fits all? And if we could have some more flexible language that goes to that problem, that allows us to move forward on this tonight, and maybe Councilmember Walback could suggest some, right?
Mr. Mayor, may I just add something? The city attorney pointed out something to me, and I, and with the, I think this is what, I think we did not word this correctly because remembering the committee's discussion, the direction is, as it is right now, it says, "At the state level exempt tipped employees from minimum wage." It's not really what we intended. It was for, "At the state level," to allow cities to exempt tipped employees from the minimum wage. Now, it's a, it's a difference there, but we're not saying we're directing the state as to what it is to do statewide. We're trying to say to the state, "Give us the opportunity." Now, practically, it may not have a difference. But I would say that that would be the appropriate clarification for whether it stays in or not.
Are you going to suggest changing it or not?
What if it says something like, "At the state level, allow cities to pursue policies I can't think of anything offhand, right? Deviate from, deviate from the minimum required, minimum wage requirements in order to more equitably distribute restaurant receipts to employees?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Or it's really friendly, we word it. I think that's all, that's fine.
Okay, now, now we got to remember what I just said. So, "At the state level, allow cities to deviate from..." And what did you just say? Oh, she got it?
Yes, I think she wrote it down. Thanks, Mrs.
Super.
What do you want? No? Good. Good. Give me just one second to read this and consider it. I think I will accept this as friendly, and hope that the second will as well. "At the state level, allow cities to pursue policies to deviate from minimum wage."
I might just jump in, Corey. I think rather than equitably distribute tips, I think you need to be a little clearer on who the tips are for.
Yeah, let's, could we actually change this to "among employees"?
Yeah.
So, "more equitably distribute tips among employees." Yeah, I would accept this as a friendly amendment.
Councilmember Fine?
I'll accept it as well. Thanks for the compromise.
I think, I think that gets at what you wanted, right?
Yeah. That's much better.
In that case, I would, if I might, Mr. Mayor, retract my request to have this divided.
Okay. Got it. Councilmember Holman?
Have a second here. I wanted to read where we are here. So, is the goal here to more equitably distribute trips among employees? It sort of goes to what you were saying to begin with, Councilmember Phil Seth, are we kind of putting this in a bucket that we don't? we kind of putting this in a bucket that we don't—aren't really intending? So, we still would be required to pay even the tipped employees the minimum wage if this is what passes. So, I thought what we were looking for was to deviate from the minimum wage requirements, and I looked at staff. If we just stopped there, deviate from minimum wage requirements, that wouldn't—so, the tipping and sharing the tips is a separate issue. It's not a minimum wage requirement, right?
So, perhaps I can help. The barrier at the state law is a state statute that does not allow you to make a different rule for tipped employees. So, I think what the instruction to the legislative advocate would be to remove that in order to allow cities full flexibility to adopt a different minimum wage, or to allow tip sharing, et cetera. I think that the language is here, but the city manager's office also kind of continuously advises and works with the legislative lobbyists. So, I think we would not be looking for the state to actually provide a rule that would be appropriate in our community or in any others, but just to remove the barrier on local experimentation.
And so, just to be—did you have something to say?
No.
So, just to be really clear with what you said, Molly, I agree with what you're saying. I just want to make sure, though, that the tip sharing is also part of the minimum wage rule? Are they linked? I didn't—I didn't think so. So, I don't think this amendment is—or this part of the motion, A, is correct. I think what we're looking for is allow cities to pursue policies to deviate from minimum wage, period, minimum wage requirements, period. And then if we want to allow something different, where we could distribute tips among employees, that would be a separate piece.
Ken, just one thought. I know this could probably come as a surprise, but I doubt that anybody in Sacramento is going to put forward legislation, word for word, the way we craft it here, really. I think we're identifying the concept that you want to pursue, and working with our advocate, and then talking with members of the legislature, we'll get a sense of what folks would think is possible. And I think, at that point, we would be coming back to the council in a way, telling you what could fly.
So, I agree—I don't disagree with you on that, Jim, but I just want to make sure we're giving clear guidance to the staff, what our intention is. So, from other colleagues, what we're looking for is we want to be able to deviate from the minimum wage requirements, and we want to be able to allow restaurants to share tips. So, it's two things.
Sorry to interrupt. The word missing in here is just restaurants, because this way it would look as though we're just deviating from minimum wage requirements.
True.
And that's not what we want to do. We're talking about only in the—in only in the—
Restaurant industry.
—the subject of restaurants do we want to have this issue taken up.
Right. I agree with that, but also, we are talking, I think, about two different things and not one. So, Jim, if you want to assure us that you've got the concept, then—
I think we completely understand the concept, and this more general language sounds like it provides a slightly larger tent that could give us direction if the council passes it to see what is possible. I mean, I think one of the issues we've always faced is whether or not anything would be viable at the state level legislatively. This is a statement of potential interest that the council could have.
And then one last thing, as a piece of this, is is the staff communicating with those who've come and spoken at the minimum wage hearings? In other words, the restaurant industry and restaurateurs who have spoken? Are they letting—is the staff letting those folks know that we are pursuing this? Because they might like to also participate at the state level.
We will—we would certainly be—once the council has actually taken action as a body in whatever direction you want to go, we would be sharing it with interested parties.
Thank you very much.
So, everyone has spoken, and the board has lit up with three more council members. So, we could sort of keep it brief, and if you're unhappy with the language, I would suggest that we change the language if it's not capturing.
You can take me off that.
Okay.
What he said is what I meant.
All right. Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I think we're getting way off base. I don't think we ever talked about redistributing tips. If somebody's a great server, and they're making a lot of money from their tips, that's their money. It really was. If you're making more money than the minimum wage, including your tips, that you would be exempt from minimum wage. So, this new language, to me, is worse than what we had before. I don't want to tell restaurants how to run their business and redistribute tips. That wasn't really the intent. And I think Councilmember Holman was correct. We're kind of conflating different ideas here now. This was really for a tipped worker restaurant or other kinds of tips. If you're making $100 an hour, including your tips, the minimum wage wasn't—that's—we're not really raising the minimum wage for those people. It's for the people that are making less than $15 an hour. And so, I think the original intent was that. Maybe the wording wasn't perfect, and that I think there was some idea that there could be tipped workers who are making less than minimum wage, but I think our lobbyists were clear about what we were intending. So, I can attempt maybe some more language if there's support for what I'm saying among my colleagues.
Well, why don't you throw it out there and see if you get a second?
Yeah, I would say that allow cities to deviate from minimum wage requirements when income, including tips, exceeds minimum wage.
No, the question is, do you want to second it or not? But let's wait. So, I'm just waiting to—if anyone wants to second it, you can say it now, or we can just wait till clerk finishes typing it. Assuming—if there is no second, there could be no second.
No, I think I'll second it. I think it actually has more clarity than—as I read it. You're just saying, "Deviate from minimum wage requirements when the income, including the tips, exceeds the minimum wage."
Right.
But—but you—you do mean that the minimum wage, then, that they would not have to be paid the minimum wage, correct?
Yeah, and I'm trying to make this broad enough that our lobbyists could explore options.
I mean, the whole goal is that they wouldn't have to pay minimum wage to their front staff that makes far more money than the back—the back of the house.
Right.
No, I've seconded it.
Okay. All right, now I'm going to clear the board, and we're going to only speak to the amendment. So, go ahead and put your lights on. Councilmember Walbach?
So, I'm not going to support this amendment, and I would ask, actually, that we—if it—especially if it passes, but I think regardless, it does sound like we should separate the components into separate votes.
Okay. Got it. I see no other lights, and so—uh, Councilmember Holman.
Sorry, it was on. To go back to Vice Mayor Niss's comment earlier, there's nothing here referencing restaurants. So, if you want to add that.
I think it applies to hairstylists. It's not just restaurants, but—
That's probably true, actually. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
I think the city managers—and from a practical perspective, the city managers indicated that there's enough give and take and block and tackle involved in moving this forward, that, you know, as long as we're sort of reasonably clear on what our intent here is, the city staff is going to work with the legislative group to do it. So, personally, I'm okay with both languages. I think they both get in the sweet spot, and I'll support whichever one, the maker and seconder to the motion, I support.
With that, let's vote on the board.
On the amendment?
On the amendment, yes. Just voting on the amendment. And—one, two, three, four. And that passes on a five to four vote with council members Walbach, Scharf—was that Phil Seth?
Yeah.
Phil Seth, and fine voting no. All right, now, back to the main motion. I'm going to split them, and we'll first vote on—how'd you want to split it, Corey? You wanted to just vote without—
Let's just do A. Are we just voting on the amendment over again? If A—
We basically are.
Yeah. Why would we do that? We just passed it.
Well, the amendment stays in. Yes, you're right. The amendment stays in. So, I guess the only question is, do we need to vote separately, Corey, on A? Would there be anybody who's not going to vote for A? Or would you feel you couldn't? Or would you feel you couldn't vote for this at all?
Yeah, with the new A, I'm not voting. I can't vote for A, and I'm the maker of the motion, so I'd like to vote for the other person.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The amendment that just passed replaced A.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, good. It's in there now, okay.
Right. So, why don't we just vote on B and C, and then I'll come back and vote on A, and I'm doing this for Corey, for Councilmember Walbach. So, let's vote on B and C. That's what I said, right? And that passes unanimously, and now we'll just vote on A.
What are we voting on?
That doesn't really make sense, what I'm doing. Makes no sense.
No, I think you've already replaced—
Yes, we voted on A already. Makes no sense.
With substitute A.
Yes. So, we need to vote on the whole motion. I actually couldn't figure out how to split it off the top of my head. So, now we just passed it.
Passed both A and B and C.
I think we've passed A and B and C. Now, we just passed it.
You already did split it.
Yes, we split it. We passed it. We're all good. Okay, sorry about that.
Includes one.
Foods what includes. All right, so now we're moving on to item number 19, which is appointment of three candidates to the Historic Resources Board, and four candidates to the Park and Recreation Commission for terms ending December 15th, and discussion and potential appointment of one candidate. And I see Councilmember Niss's light on.
I am the vice mayor.
Vice mayor, sorry. You are the vice mayor, yes.
Not to be overly sensitive about it.
Vice Mayor Niss.
I would like to make the following suggestion in the form of a motion, that we continue with the Historic Resources Board appointments tonight, but that we take the Parks and Rec Commission at a—after we re-advertise and vote on that at some point in the future.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Yes, clarification.
So, just to be clear, so you want to not vote on anybody on Parks and Rec tonight? You want to reopen that because of the new vacancy?
I want to reopen Parks and Rec, but continue—but vote tonight on the HRB.
So, so you're—okay.
So, meaning—
Yeah, so you don't want to vote on anybody tonight, so, okay.
And I want to vote on Historic Resources Board.
Okay, I hear you.
But not Parks and Rec.
Okay. I see no second. And now I have Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay, so, I kind of partially support that, but I guess why not postpone both?
So, you need to make the motion. That's the way it works.
Okay.
So, is that the motion you're making?
I'd like to make a motion, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to postpone both, both Parks and Recs and Historic Resource Board.
And then to go out to a date uncertain and open the recruitment of the PRC.
Exactly.
And open the recruitment of both of them.
Exactly.
Okay. Do we have a second for Councilmember Tanaka's?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Councilmember Fine. All right, I'm going to clear the board, because everyone has lights on tonight. I want to make sure you're speaking to that, so I'll give a second. All right, so—
Well, mine is dead, because I didn't get a second.
That's correct. So, Councilmember Tanaka, do you want to speak to your motion first?
Well, you know, we have three new members of council who didn't get a chance to actually interview a lot of these candidates, and, you know, we have a very active community, and I think it's important to give them a chance. To me, it makes sense to have equal opportunity for both commissions and board.
Okay. Councilmember Fine, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, quickly. Mostly the same reasons. Also, on the HRB, while I'm very thankful that we do have a number of citizens interested in continuing their service, I'm more surprised that there are three incumbents for three seats, and I would be pleased if there was a greater range of applicants.
All right. Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I'll decline.
Okay. Councilmember Walbach?
Yeah, I just wanted to add my voice in saying that I actually think we should go out for both of them. I'm not sure why there were so few applications. In the end, we might still vote to appoint from those who have already applied, whether it's because of the holidays, or the election, or what. I was a little disappointed that we didn't get some of the enthusiasm from the community on these issues expressed in applications. I think if we opened it up again, there might be an opportunity to get more people to apply, and I'd like to give them that opportunity.
Councilmember DuBois?
So, you know, I would support holding open interviews for the newly opened position on Parks and Rec. But, you know, we have—we have an ordinance, we have a schedule for doing interviews and for doing appointments. I don't think—and again, that—that has not changed, and it's always with this kind of fall interviews. I think it's unfortunate. I mean, we interviewed these candidates in November. It was unfortunate we didn't appoint them sooner, but I think it's a real slap in the face. They filed their applications, came in for interviews, and we're going to reject all of them and do it all over. I think a more proper process, if we don't like the timing, would be—and we did this last year, we changed the spring recruiting and interview time period, would be to actually change the fall period if, you know, there's a concern about new council members, but I wouldn't just reject it because of that. We did have four applicants for three slots on HRB. That's not necessarily a board where we get 20 people applying every time. So, you know, for the—for the old openings that we interviewed for already, I personally think we should go ahead and appoint those tonight. For the new openings that happened after those interviews, I think we should go ahead and open up and do a new recruiting period. But I'd be—I think it's just—you know, I'm not really hearing a good reason why we would reject the effort of the citizens who applied and came in already.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Yes, I guess I'd propose a substitute motion that we appoint three candidates to the HR Historic Resources Board, and four candidates to Park and Rec, and we would open applications for the newly—the new position on Parks and Rec for the unexpired term ending December 15th, 2018.
And again, I second.
Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion?
So, just real quickly, again, you know, there's kind of two things going on here that—we interviewed people, we went through a process, we told them what the process and timing was. I think we should stick to that. You know, if we want to change the timing, the calendar year, we should discuss that separately. And then I do think we had some good candidates. Certainly, we had some really strong candidates for Parks and Rec. You know, I don't want to send a signal that we weren't happy with those applications. And, you know, we had four applicants for three seats on the Historic Resources Board, so I think we're in good shape on both of those.
All right. Councilmember Holman, would you like to speak to your second?
I—I think Councilmember DuBois has spoken spoken well to it.
All right. Councilmember Niss—oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Niss.
Tom, usually you have very good arguments for a number of things, but tonight I disagree. I think we have a newly constituted council, and that's what's different. I don't think each of the new members of the three really new members have probably either had the chance to be involved in the interviews, nor have they had a chance to—I doubt you've sat down and watched all the interviews. That would surprise me. But when I get the opportunity, I would suggest that not only should we go out for—again, for the HRB, I'm willing to support both of those, and the Parks and Rec. And I also, when I get that opportunity, will weave in planning and transportation, reopening at the same time.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
So, I think there's merit to both sides of this—of this—of this discussion, right? I think, you know, I think, you know, it's been pointed out that, you know, if we vote tonight on these folks, on these—on these commissions, that, you know, a third of the council won't have been involved, right? And, you know, and that's—that's a significant issue. On the other hand, you know, we had these people, they volunteered their time to come do this, you know, we interviewed them. I wish we'd got this done in the previous—in the previous council session, right? But, you know, we didn't, right? And I just think it's—it's—it's unfair—it's grossly unfair to these people to say, "Come in here and interview with us." to say, "Come in here and interview with us and do this," and then come back and say, "Well, you got to do it again," right? I mean, these folks are going to volunteer their time for this kind of stuff, right? So, I think that it's, it's really about them, it's not about us. And it's not their fault that we had a council change in the middle of the process, or that we couldn't get this done, you know, in time for a coherent council to do it. So, I see merit to both sides of this, but I think we ought to proceed with the, the people. And I think the, the suggestion over here that, you know, there will be another spot open on Park, right? And, and to do it concurrently with the PTC is, I think that makes some sense, right? So I, I think, given the waiting on both sides, I think I would favor proceeding with both, both HRB and Park this evening.
Councilmember Holman, your light's on, right? Or not? Okay, I wasn't sure. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I have to agree with the Vice Chair in regards to PTC as well. So I'm not sure if we're talking about that right now.
So we're not talking about PTC?
We're not. I was just giving you a clue as to what might lie ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Fine?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not going to support the substitute motion, and may make a motion my own in a few minutes. I think I have a compromise, though, where if we do go out on both of these boards and commissions again, we re-advertise them, but we would be able and willing to retain the current applicants in their interviews. I don't see the need to re-interview these people. I think the current and former council members did a good job interviewing them. I would just like to see a wider range of applicants for the new council to make a decision on.
Councilmember Koo.
So, actually, I did attend the interviews for everybody that's listed over here. And also, I, I would support the substitute motion that Councilmember DuBois has put forth. Many, I agree with what he said, you know, people did come out, people made their effort. And this is since November of, when was it? It was since last year. And so I think that they, they are, again, what Councilmember Phil Seth said, it's about them, not about us. There's also videos that is available for us to watch and to see the interviews. So I would really like to see this move forward and that vacant position to be put out for applicants.
I just wanted to say that I, I do think this is a difficult call. But if we do go out again, I do think it's important, then, that we give people the opportunity, frankly, if they've been interviewed, to not re-interview. But if they want to be re-interviewed, that they should have the opportunity to be re-interviewed.
That's a good idea.
So... All right, we have two more, two more lights. You've both spoken at least twice, that's Tanaka and Phil Seth. But, I mean, is it...
I was going to comment that if we do go again, go out again, the, the process that Councilmember Fine and, and the mayor have suggested is probably the right one to do. And yet, it still doesn't completely solve the problem that some of the candidates, some of the council didn't participate in the interviews, right?
Councilmember Tanaka.
Same thing, I, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's vote on the substitute motion. And that fails on a five to four vote. All right, let's vote on the main motion.
What's the main motion again?
The main motion is...
It's that one.
Is the first one. Oh, is there, oh, I see a bunch of lights, right? My bad, I didn't realize we suddenly had all these lights. All right, on the, back to the main motion. Councilmember, was it Holman? Did you put your light on?
I did. It's, I don't want to steal whoever said it, maybe Councilmember Phil said, that persons who have already applied would be included in the pool of candidates, and they'd be given the option of whether they would like to be interviewed again or not.
Well, I would second that. So we should put that in there.
I think that was Fine's suggestions. Or Tanaka, one of those two.
It's fine, you can put it in there.
So, Tanaka would accept that as a...
I, I accept that.
Amendment, okay.
All right. I'd also accept that. Okay, so we have that. That was Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Fine?
Just a second.
Oh, you have more?
To permit current applicants to interview the council again. This is only capturing so far part of it. It's permit current applicants to interview the council again. We want to keep the current pool of candidates, want to retain the current pool of candidates and permit current applicants to interview the council again if they so choose. Okay, that gets it.
Okay, you're good. Councilmember Holman? All right. Councilmember Fine? Okay, you're good. Councilmember Tanaka? You're good. Councilmember Phil Seth? All right, going on this side, Councilmember DuBois?
So, I do think City Clerk is going to have to contact all these past candidates to see if they're still interested. I think it's the same issue we have with item 20. We get three or four months away from an interview. You don't even know if people are available. So, you know, again, I just feel like we're adopting some very bad process tonight. I just want to say again, we have in our ordinances a time specified for applications and for appointments. And we're basically just shifting it, you know, to the new year, because we feel like it. And so, you know, I, I'm not going to support this motion.
All right, seeing no lights, we could vote on the board. And that passes on a seven to two vote, with Councilmembers DuBois and Koo voting no. All right, and now we move on to item number 20.
Can I make my motion?
No. Councilmember Niss, I mean, Vice Mayor Niss.
Having previously tipped my hand, but I would like to suggest with this the same solution that we just suggested. Let me try to reword it as well as I can, which is that we, that we advertise again for Planning and Transportation, that we allow those who have already applied to either leave their names on the list or be interviewed again, and that we attempt to move this along as quickly as possible.
Second that. And that was seconded by Councilmember DuBois. All right, Councilmember Niss, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I, I think we're beating this to death tonight. So I, I think we can move this one on pretty quickly.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I think this is a completely different situation, actually. This is a new opening. So the proper thing we would normally do is put it open for applications. And so, again, I think there's a very big difference between items 19 and 20. So I agree with the motion.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So, having served on the PTC for a couple of terms, I actually believe that the PTC could do a lot more for a council. And so, I support the current motion on the floor. I think it's actually a really good thing. But I wanted to float the idea of, rather than just one open seat that Councilman Fine used to have, if we get, let's say, two strong candidates, or three really strong candidates, we would not want to consider perhaps appointing them in place of some of the current members. So I wanted to float this idea out to my members.
I'm not sure that's legit, is it?
Wait, we'll just, you can put your lights on and address the comments if we want to. Councilmember Holman.
So is what you're suggesting, that the council would replace sitting planning commissioners?
Yes.
I would never support that. Not in a process like this. And I don't sure, not sure that we even have a process that would allow for that. So I think that's a little off the wall.
Councilmember Walbach.
Okay, so I'm just going to address the motion that's actually in front of us, and say, we actually might want to tweak this a little bit, because we don't really have a current pool. We have the most recent pool, right? And so we might want to change it to, so we should probably change current to most recent pool of applicants. Because, yeah, this is a very different situation, where we haven't recruited for this particular one. And so, with that change, it looks like the maker and secor are okay with that. I'll be supporting this. So this is actually, this is different from our usual process, because we're, we're including those who most recently applied. I think there were some strong candidates in that, in that pool, and I'd like to see them included in consideration. But if they would like to come and interview again, that would be great. And although it was mentioned in the previous agenda, I would just say that the concept of maybe amending, something to think about in the future, of amending our timing of interviews to move it to the new year, actually might be a good, a good thing to explore. And I thought that when Councilmember DuBois made that point, it is well taken, and maybe we should actually explore that.
All right. So I'll just make a brief comment. I'm obviously going to support this motion. But I did want to point out to my colleagues that, at least since I've been on the council and, to starting in 2010 with Councilmember Holman, there have actually been several times when we have interviewed candidates, we have decided to actually go out again. And that's not an unusual process to do. So I just wanted to let everyone remember that. With that, I don't see any other lights, let's vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. All right. And now for the most important item of the evening. When are we going to schedule our council break? So, I, we don't have any cards or anything, right? All right. Councilmember, or, oh, Vice Mayor Niss.
Well, just to get something out on the table, I think what we did last year worked pretty well. And so for the six of us who are still here, I'd be interested in your comments on it. But I would make a suggestion in the form of a motion that we consider our summer break starting on June, on July 1st, and ending on, I think, Beth, we said August 12th, or 11th? So we would meet on August 12th, so I don't know when. Or do you have us ending on the 15th? No, I've got another one. I'm looking at August right now.
We could end it on the 11th, and then you would have the next meeting, the 12th. And the other suggestion is that we start the break on the 3rd of July, rather than the 1st, because it's a Monday.
Uh-huh. And I, either of those would be okay.
So I'm confused. Isn't the Monday the 12th? I mean, the Monday the 11th, on August?
It starts with a Monday.
Right, it starts with Monday, so it's the 11th. So what's your motion?
It ends on the 11th. So my, my motion is to start with Beth's suggestion on July 3rd.
Okay. And end on the 10th.
Yeah, so you would not be meeting on Monday, obviously. And then you would return for a council meeting on the 11th of August.
No, the 11th is a Monday.
That's a, yeah. My calendar says the 11th of August is a Friday.
Are you looking at the 2017 August calendar?
Yes, I am, on my Google Calendar.
So we're just looking at the one here. Is this one wrong?
Oh. The 14th is Monday.
Then the 14th is perfect.
All right, so Beth gave us the wrong calendar.
So, David, do you want to correct us?
August 14th is a Monday, and that is when we would return.
Okay, so we'd end on the 13th. And then when would we start? No, when would the, when would the break start?
July 3rd.
July 3rd, so we'd, we'd have a meeting on the 3rd?
No.
No meeting on the 3rd?
No meeting on the 3rd.
Okay, so, oh, got it.
And therefore, doesn't it make more sense to talk about the summer break being from July 2nd instead of July 3rd?
Or July 1st?
We could, yeah.
July 1st is a Saturday, right?
Whatever works best for, for stating it in the calendar and for meetings would be to break that weekend and then to come back after the weekend of the, the 12th? Yeah. So to return to council on the 12th. And that gives us five weeks.
Oh, sorry, not the 12th.
It's totally up to you. We could list it as July 1st, which is the Saturday, so that we have no meetings on that weekend, and then come back, returning on August 14th, which, with the ending of August 13th as your break.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Beth. That then becomes my motion.
So we need a second for that motion, if that's the motion.
Do we want to include winter and just do it all at once?
Oh, yeah, let's add in the winter, I agree. We didn't get to the winter yet. So Liz, what's the winter?
Traditionally, winter break is the last two weeks in December. The suggestion in the staff report is December 18th through January 2nd of 2018.
Yes, so, yes. So that, that does put us in a somewhat unusual situation of it ending in the, in the middle of the week, right? Because the 2nd will be a holiday, is that correct? So the 1st and the 2nd will be holidays, meaning that if it ends on the 3rd, we would probably not have a meeting until the 8th, is that correct? I can't imagine us having a, a meeting on Wednesday, the 3rd. So let me, let me incorporate that into the motion. If somebody wants to change it, then I would suggest the winter closure be from December 18th until January 7th. Good. We've got a second.
Okay, would you like to speak to your motion? Don't feel like you have to.
Actually, I've got a good, strong second, so I'm not going to speak to it. I think it just speaks for itself.
Councilmember DuBois? All right, I see no lights. Can we vote on the board? All right. That passes unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is a closed session conference with the city.
Could I add one thing to that? I think that means our reorg will not come next year until the 8th of January. And we may want to actually include that in the comments.
That's correct. It would not come until the 8th.
Right.
Okay. The next thing we have is conference with city attorney on existing litigation, which is Buena Vista Mobile Home Park Residents Association versus the City of Palo Alto, Santa Clara County Superior Court Case Number 115-CV 284763. Oh, I skipped council comments. I did skip council comments. That's right. All right, we'll go back and do council comments before I do that. Anyone have any council comments they would like to share? Seeing none, we will go back to the...
Why don't I add something, though? Because if you remember last year, I was president of the Peninsula Division of the League of California Cities. And among other aspects of what they do, there are a number of committees which meet. If any of you are interested in joining those committees, they will be meeting, I think, Beth, am I correct, on the 17th and 18th of this month? That would be Thursday and Friday of January?
That's correct, in Sacramento.
They will be held in Sacramento. They're at the same time of the mayor's and the new council members' meetings. So if any of you are going to those, you might be interested in, in finding out about the committees. They include employee relations, taxation and revenue. I've forgotten some of them, Molly, you might remember. Some public safety, which Cory's on. I'm on tax and revenue, or any of you on any other committees. But I think if you're interested in getting involved at the state level, it's really a very good way to do it. It's interesting to be on the committees. And, as I said, I'm on tax and revenue, and Mayor Kirsten Keith is going to chair that committee this year. And then one other date, the Peninsula Division will have their first dinner meeting in Mountain View at Don Giovanni's on February 2nd. And you'll be delighted to know it's going to deal with social justice, inclusivity, and so forth, very much what you've been interested before, in before, Cory. Thank you.
All right, so I need a motion to go into closed session. All right. If you could vote on the board. And that passes unanimously.